For the Tuesday, October 16th, 2018, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. And at this time, I would ask everyone to please join me in bowing our heads for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. If you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jones, would you please review the agenda and any adjustments there, too?
Yes, thank you Chairman Mallory. We have one addition under close session, which is property acquisition, which is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5. And then, an addition to our administrative matters, and it's actually an addition to item 8.4, which is already on the agenda, which is the request from Tax Administration for approval of September refunds and releases. There's some additional detailed information for Budget Amendment Number 15A, in the amount of $9,000. We are removing the public hearing that was originally on the agenda for tonight, which is item 7.1, and that is the public hearing to consider the adoption for the 2020 Public Transportation Program. And in place of that, we are adding that item under Administrative Matters to call for the public hearing. That will be an addition, which is 8.6, under Administrative Matters, to call for the public hearing for the 2020 Public Transportation Program, and that will actually be on November the 20th.
Any additional adjustments? All in favor of the agenda as so adjusted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose like sign, motion carries unanimously. And we move on to a presentation of special recognitions and awards. This evening, we are saying goodbye and hello. This is a hail and farewell, of a hail to an incoming clerk and a farewell to a clerk, Rita Gaither, who has been serving this board since 2013. And so, she will be passing the ceremonial timekeeping clock to our incoming clerk, and the whip that she keeps under there to keep us all in line after we give her a little send-off. So Rita, if you could come up front.
Hey, did your family come up here? Was that not it? Okay. Well, I love it. Now, Rita has a long and storied career and attention to Iredell County and Davie County. When she was at high school, she had an opportunity to shadow and do an internship at the Davie County Clerk's and the county manager's office. And just that opportunity put a spark and motivation in her vision of this as something I really enjoyed, serving people and making, you know, the job of the county commissioners easier and us more effective. So, that started her journey. She, after high school, went into the county manager's office and worked there. Along the way, she had a little family come along and decided to take a break, and you say no mom, but then came back into the workforce, first as a teacher's assistant and a bus driver, and then subsequently on to be an executive assistant for the curriculum management folks in the school system and a number of other positions. Then she decided to get out of the school system and take advantage of an opportunity in the register of deeds. So, after the register of deeds, there was an opportunity to gain label as the executive assistant and manager in Iredell County, and she came on board to work with Joel Mashburn in that capacity. And then subsequently to that, Ron Smith came on board and she trained him up. And then, after that, and in that capacity as the executive assistant, she was also the deputy clerk to the board of commissioners. And then in 2013, the opportunity came to be able to apply for the clerk of work, and she did. It was hired and she's been here ever since. Her living is one where she is trading in babysitting fine professionals for babysitting grandchild or granddaughter, and so I think she's been really competitive compared to that task. And we're just going to miss you tremendously. I can tell you that we have a pre-agenda, we have the formal seven o'clock agenda, both of which are open to the public, which we intend. But that means we don't have an opportunity to eat except for what Rita has put in front of us, and she's always helped us have a good meal, and most importantly, some specials her, so she can have coks with sufficient amounts of icing. So, we are certainly going to miss you, but she's really been focused on making sure the transition is an easy one, and she's worked closely with Amy, who is going to be coming on board officially this evening. And we just want to thank you for the tremendous amount of support that you give, and to all the boards that you've worked with, and all the positions that you've worked in service to citizens of both Amy and Iredell County. So, the floor is yours.
This has been an inconvenient position, but one I feel important, because especially we can't find a better way to work with that power. And I appreciate everything that you've done for me in this position as well, which is important, because I'm not a researcher, because you have to be back there to do it.
Well, we have a plaque that we'd like you to hang under, "I Love You Long," and it says, "Rita Gaither, your prescient and dedicated service in Iredell County, 2018."
All right. At this time, it's time to officially pass the baton, or the time clock, or whatever instruments of power are represented in the swearing-in of Amy Anderson, our new clerk of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. So Rita, you are in charge.
Okay. (inaudible) Do you, Amy Anderson, solemn and square that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America? Do you, Amy Anderson, further and further solemn and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and rare, truly just and stable in your own, and that the constitutional powers and authorities which are in your may be established or governed thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and uphold the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities and ability, do you, Amy Anderson, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of clerk of Iredell County Board of Commissioners, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help God?
This is my cousin, Melvin, and my son, Todd, and I'm already out.
Welcome aboard.
We're going to borrow mommy for a lot of nights.
The next item that we will pick up is item 7.2, which is a public hearing to consider a request by Brett Kruger to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. Who's here to be heard, I think? Mr. Matthew Todd?
Good evening to the board.
Good evening.
The request we have before us tonight is an ETJ release. It's down off Langtree Road. You can see the parcels highlighted in blue. It's roughly just over four acres. The proposed development of the property is for commercial and a hotel use. The applicant is planning to combine it with these properties to the south. It is on the agenda with the town of Mooresville for annexation in December. The county's land use plan calls for those parcels to be medium-density residential, or high-density residential. And there's an area, the properties do have some older houses on them, and again, this is just for a release of jurisdiction. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any comments or questions?
Have you had any calls or complaints to your office on this?
We had one message left, asking about it, and I returned the call and left the message back, but we did not hear any concerns or interest expressed.
At this time, I will open the public hearing in relation to the request by Brett Kruger to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. I do not have anyone that has signed up to be heard on that matter. I would inquire of everyone in attendance if there is anyone would like to be heard on that matter. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask, is there any more discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would make the motion to approve the request for the release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville by Mr. Brett Kruger.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we'll move on to administrative matters that were appropriate for our consent agenda. We heard presentations on these at the pre-agenda meeting at 5:00 this afternoon. And Ms. Jones, would you please summarize those?
Absolutely. Thank you Chairman Mallory. We had a request from the Iredell Statesville Schools for approval of a deed to the North Carolina Department of Transportation on county-owned property located on Dooley Road, which is for a widening and turn lane project at Lake Norman High School. We had a request from Tax Administration for approval of the September refunds and releases, and with this, we did have consideration for Budget Amendment Number 15A, in the amount of $9,000. There's a request from the deputy clerk for approval of minutes from the meeting on October the 2nd, 2018. And then finally, a call for a public hearing for November the 20th, for the 2020 Public Transportation Program.
Thank you. Any further discussion on those matters? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined by Ms. Jones?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now circle back to item 8.2, which is a request from Finance for adoption of a project ordinance for Third Creek Middle School and Woodland Heights Middle School. And Deb Cheek is here to tee that up.
Thank you Commissioners. We are just now issuing the last of the 2014 bonds that were authorized by the voters of Iredell County. We issued a par amount of $43,980,000. We were able to actually gain a premium on these bonds of about $3.9 million, and we were able to get an interest rate of 3.10%. And what I have before you tonight is the project ordinance to appropriate these funds to begin construction on Third Creek Middle School and Woodland Heights Middle School. We are also, at this time, asking you to appropriate interest earnings that we believe will be seen on this project, as well as sales tax refunds that will come back into us for the schools to be able to appropriate. The last item they have requested is that, from their fiscal year 20, capital allotment, that we reserve $1 million of those funds to come into this capital project fund to be able to complete the two middle schools. So I'm asking at this time for this project ordinance to be approved.
Are there any comments or questions? I will say that this is the last tranche of projects that were approved by the voters in the bond referendum in 2014.
Right.
Represents two middle schools. And I believe that the middle school that is being built at Third Creek, that will be occupied by current students from Statesville Middle School, and that the IB school at Northview will likely move into the old Statesville Middle School building, and that the new Woodland Heights Middle School will be occupied by the current students at Brawley Middle School, and the Mountmore IB Middle School, or Mountmore IB Middle School will then occupy the current Brawley School location. Did I get them all right?
I believe so.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? I want to thank you for the bond rates that you were able to procure. Those are excellent, under the current market conditions. Is there a motion? Well, excuse me. Yeah. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the capital project orders and constructions and bonds of Third Creek Middle School and Woodland Heights Middle School.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deb. We'll now move on to item 8.3, which is a request from the Tax Assessor to adopt the schedules of values for the January 1st, 2019 reappraisal, approve and issue individual orders adopting the final uniform schedules of values, and approve for publishing the notice of orders adopting the final uniform schedules.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Hey, Ms. Miller, how are you?
I'm doing fine. Hope y'all are doing well. I'm here this evening to request the board complete the adoption process for the 2019 Uniform Schedules of Values Standards and Rules for Market Value and Present Use Value. Per the general statutes, the market and present use value schedules to be used in the 2019 reappraisal were submitted to the Board of Commissioners on September 4th, and a public hearing was held on October 2nd. Having met these requirements, and there being no changes or amendments to the schedules, I request the following three items, which are itemized on the memo that you have. First, I request the board approve and adopt the market value and present use value final uniform schedules of values, standards, and rules to be used in the 2019 reappraisal. These schedules have been presented separately, and I request they be approved and adopted separately.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve and adopt the market value and present use value final uniform schedules of values, standards, rules to be used in 2019 reappraisal. These schedules have been presented separately and should be approved and adopted separately, per Ms. Miller.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And second, I request you approve and issue individual orders adopting the final uniform schedules for market value, the market value schedule and the present use schedule.
All right. Let's see. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve and issue individual orders adopting the uniform, the final uniform schedules of values, standards, and rules, market value schedules, and present use value schedule.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Third, I request you approve for publishing the notice of orders adopting the final uniform schedules for the 2019 general reappraisal, the market and present use value schedules.
Are there any questions or comments? None? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I also make a motion to approve the publishing of notice of orders adopting the final uniform schedules of values, standards, and rules for the 2019 general reappraisal, market and present use value.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. The notice of the orders adopting the schedules will be published once a week for four successive weeks in local newspapers. Property owners who assert the schedules are invalid may accept to the orders adopting the schedules and appeal to the North Carolina Property Tax Commission through November 20th, 2018. And thank you for finalizing the adoption process of the 2019 schedules of values.
Would you reiterate for the public where they can view these regulations?
Yes, sir. The schedules are available on the county website. They're available, the hard copy is available in the assessor's office, and they're available in the public libraries. And we're happy to answer any questions that may have.
Thank you all for your hard work, Ms. Miller, and great staff, teamwork, and putting all this together, and I know you've been working all year crunching numbers.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for it.
At this time, we will circle back, and we have two appointments before the board. First is a presentation by administration and representatives from the Dry Cleaner Solvent Cleanup Program on the Iredell County Main Public Library Environmental Mitigation Project.
Chairman Mallory, I'll introduce our guests that we have with us. We have Billy Meyer with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. We have Jenna Olson with Hart and Hickman, and also Becca Deal is here as well with Hart and Hickman. Just to kind of give you a quick synopsis of why we're here, if you remember back in April 2008, we reached out to the site to help us with some contamination issues that we discovered at our library. And we petitioned to join the Dry Cleaner Solvent Program, which we were accepted, and they have been working diligently, doing various samples, and trying to identify the level of contamination and what is appropriate if any mitigation is necessary. So, they're here, they have finished all of their sampling, and they're here to give you kind of a report of the results of that. And then after their finish, Davis Levy will be stepping up to talk to us a little bit about next steps as far as the county's concerned. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jenna and let her go ahead and begin the presentation.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to be here. I'm going to start out by talking about the results of our investigation to date, and then Billy's going to jump in and talk about next steps, and if you guys have questions along the way, feel free to interrupt and ask away. This map is showing the results of a historical investigation that we performed initially, looking at various references. We found six current or former dry cleaners in the area of the library, and it looks like we have evidence of releases from three of these. Let me see if my pointer works here. So, Iredell Laundry Company, right in the area of the library, we found some releases. Also found evidence around the Sloane's Cleaners, which is a current active facility, and this former Smith's Cleaners. These two sites, the property owners have recently petitioned to enter those sites into the DISCA program, so we're also, you know, getting started on assessment of those sites. I'm going to go over some figures showing the extent of soil and groundwater contamination, but just to set you up for what you're looking at, this is a map showing how these types of releases occur. Dry cleaning solvent is a liquid, so if you spill it at the ground surface, it's going to generally migrate downward with gravity, usually doesn't spread out a whole lot until you get to the water table. And the water table here is about 25 to 30 feet deep, so once you get in the water table, that's where it can really spread out. So when we find contaminated soil, that usually tells us we're around where the actual release So this is showing our extent of soil contamination so far. You've got the You've got the, the library here, and you can see we've got a pretty hefty amount of soil contamination around this Iredale Laundry Company. We found a little bit over around this Norwich Coin-operated laundry, but it's pretty negligible in comparison to the Iredale Laundry impact, so we're not really considering that a site. And then over here, we do have a little bit of impacts around the Smith's and Sloane's. Those sites were just recently entered into the program, so we're pretty early on in our investigation there, but we do have enough data to show that there is some kind of releases. And this shows our extent of groundwater contamination. And all these dots here are different sampling locations, and same with the prior figure. Based on the data that we have so far, we don't have this completely assessed, but we have enough data to have a pretty decent handle on it. You can see we've got releases around the library, again, from this Iredale Laundry Facility, also releases around Sloane's, and these seem to co-mingle down gradient into one big plume. And we do have some additional groundwater assessment planned to further refine that assessment. So how might occupants in the area be exposed to this contamination? The first way is through drinking water wells. We did a survey to look for water supply wells within a half a mile of the library. We did not find any. Looks like everybody's connected to public water, so we're not worried about people being exposed this way. Another way is through contact with shallow soil contamination, people gardening or doing utility work. It looks like all of our shallow soil contamination is paved, so we're not worried about this exposure route. You could also have contact with surface water that's contaminated. There is a surface water body further to the north of the library. As part of our next phase of investigation, we're going to be getting some samples right next to that surface water body. Based on the data so far, I'm not expecting this to be a big problem, but we'll be looking at that next. And then vapor intrusion has been our primary investigation focus. So what is vapor intrusion? Some of you who were at this public meeting we had previously have already seen the slide, but just to explain, it's the migration of vapors from contaminated soil or groundwater into overlying buildings. So just to give you a real-world example, you're pumping gas, that's a volatile chemical, you can smell it. Dry cleaning solvent is the same way. It'll generate vapors, and those vapors can migrate from that subsurface contamination into buildings. People breathe the vapors, can pose a health risk. All right. So this is a map showing our entire area where we have contamination. So, within this blue area is where we're looking at assessing vapor intrusion. A lot of people have asked about these courthouse buildings over here and whether they're a risk. Based on our data so far, we think those are outside the area of contamination, so we do not consider any vapor intrusion evaluation warranted for those buildings. We do have, in this area, around Sloane's and Smith's, we have some vapor intrusion assessment planned as part of our next phase of investigation. We haven't done that yet. So most of what we've done so far has been focused on the library, the tax office, and these 118 Stockton Street buildings. So when we're looking at vapor intrusion, we typically start out by looking at soil vapor. So this is samples collected from the airspace within the soil, right below a building or in close proximity to a building. And you can see here, all these, all these squares are different soil vapor samples. You can see we've got some around the tax office, a whole bunch around the library, and some around Stockton Street. The only area where we found vapor concentrations that would suggest a risk for current occupants is around the library. So we've concluded that we don't need to go do indoor air sampling around the tax office or at this 118 Stockton Street property. This map is showing our indoor air sampling location. So on the left, you've got the lower level of the library, and on the right, you've got the main level. We've collected 33 indoor air samples in the lower level, over four rounds of sampling. All these locations in green are indoor air samples. Main level, we've gotten six samples over two rounds of sampling. And this is showing our data. So we've got concentrations on the left, and this is dates over here, so you can see concentrations over time. This is the risk for a worker in the library. On the left, you've got noncarcinogenic risk. On the right, you've got carcinogenic risk. We look at those separately because there's different modes of impacts to health from carcinogens versus noncarcinogens. But you can see here, for a worker in the library, all of our concentrations are below the level that we would consider safe, both for noncarcinogens and carcinogens. This map is showing the same info, but this is for a library user. So a library user, we're looking at, you could have a child, you know, different people using the library. And again, all of our concentrations are below that level that we would consider to be safe. So this kind of shows that despite the fact that we do have some pretty hefty, you know, vapor source under the southeastern corner of that library, it doesn't appear to be getting into the library at this time sufficient to pose a health risk. So next steps planned by, by the DISCA program. At the Iredale Laundry, for that site, we're going to put in a permanent monitoring well network to monitor the plume over time. And those are just flush-mounted eight-inch diameter manholes with a well inside that we can collect groundwater samples over time to see what the plume is doing. That will include a well near the down gradient surface water body. We're going to do some additional assessment to revise, refine our soil assessment, just get a better handle on exactly where our contaminated soil is. And then ongoing indoor air sampling in the library during worst-case winter and summer conditions, just to monitor and make sure that it is staying okay inside the building. And for Sloane's and Smith's cleaners, we're kind of just getting started on those, so we've got soil, groundwater, vapor intrusion assessment planned at those sites as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Billy now to talk about more options.
Okay. And I'm the state project manager, and just on behalf of the state, I'd like to, to thank Iredale County specifically, Davis Levy and Beth Jones. It's been a very synergistic relationship. We've been able to assess the situation very, very rapidly to ensure the public safety in it, that it's been a very good relationship. So as Jen was discussing, the, the air inside of the, the library, the conditions are below acceptable risk levels, so they're considered safe. So right now, the state does not plan on doing any further mitigation or remediation because the, the conditions are safe inside of the library. So, and, and the reason, so, there, there are dry cleaning fluid chemicals present in, in the air inside. But the reason that the state, the way that we evaluate these sites, is we have 330 active sites in the state right now that are receiving fund money to assess or clean up, or we're having to prioritize those. We have $6 million in the fund. So 330 divided by 6,000, uh, 6 million, or 6 million divided by 330 is $18,000 per site. So if that's all we can spend on each site, you have prioritization criteria, which includes like exposure to the vapors, exposure to soil, groundwater, that you look at each site in a relative sense across the state, so you can funnel that money to the sites where it's appropriate to spend where you have unsafe conditions to folks. And we just don't have that condition at this site to justify or trigger the release of fund money at this site for, for mitigation and remediation. But we, we, we do have to continue, as Jenna stated, to monitor the situation because we do have this strong source of soil vapor just outside of the library, which is causing the, the safe condition, but still a condition present at the, at the, at the library. And so the following slides, so why are we even talking about mitigation now at all? Because as we were moving forward with this, this was kind of a really high-profile situation. We had sensitive receptors, there's children, public peo- public. And so every time we got data that came in, we had to be ready as a state to mitigate or take appropriate steps if, if it were, the results came back unsafe, and we had to implement some kind of mitigation option and/or remediation. So from the very beginning, proactively, we've been in discussions internally and with the county as how we were going to address this, and I'm just going to talk about that a little bit now. This is a cross section that I'm about to show you. So that's just cutting straight through the library, so, I'm going to use my pointer. Wait. Laser. Okay, so this right here is basically where we found soil contamination. And the soil contamination is highly correlated, or that, it's, it's really, there's a strong relationship between where we found the soil vapor concentrations and where we found the soil contamination concentrations, which is, so there's really strong evidence, this is where the dry cleaning fluid release occurred, right here, and this is at the southeastern corner of the building. And that, we just illustrated that these vapors, when you have a building, they're basically drawing in because of the pressure difference between the building and the subsurface. These, these are being drawn in. I need to go back to the previous slide. Wait, hold on, sorry. Okay. So, so this is, okay, so this is what's going on. So the vapors, there's a whole lot of really strong, this source area is 1.3 million micrograms per meter cubed. And just know that that means it's a very strong source of, of vapor concentrations outside of the library. But inside the library, they're reduced by about 20,000 times. So, it's just, and we've got four rounds of sampling, right, which is enough for us to kind of say it's stable, but we need to continue monitoring. So that's kind of where we are right now. But we have to continue monitoring because if conditions in the future were to indicate conditions were unsafe, then we move into these mitigation steps, which I'm going to review right now. Next slide. Okay. So the first, one of the first things you do is this is, is a passive, it's called a passive mitigation technology, and this specific one is called retrocoat. And you'll hear the county talk about this more later. But it's basically a, and it's right here, and you can see just from the illustration, that the vapors are trying to get into the building through this, this pressure differential inside the building. And this is a, it's basically like a slurry that hardens, it's like, almost like a paint, and you put it down, and it, and he's got a primer, and you put that on top of it, and along the, the ground floor and along the walls, and it seals up all the pore spaces, cracks, and everything, and prevents the migration of vapors inside and significantly reduces the indoor air concentration. So that's one mitigation option. And these options, as we go through them, you can do one or more in combination depending on what the, the goals are and objectives. So this is just, this is just what it looks like. That's what I was saying, it kind of, it just looks like a, like a paint. And, and what it is, is it's a slurry that has solids in it that are resistant to these chemicals coming inside. Okay. The next option would be to install what's called a sub-slab depressurization system. And all it is, is like these, these little vacuum points beneath the slab, they capture these vapors, they capture them before they can enter the building, and then they just have a fan, like a, a mechanical fan, that blows those vapors into the atmosphere before they enter the building. Again, this is another viable option for mitigation. And this is just a picture, that's the blower fan, that's the extraction point inside, and goes up to the atmosphere over there. This is, so this is remediation. Mitigation is more of a, it's a measure that will, that will stop the symptom of vapor intrusion or vapors entering into the building. But remediation gets at the, it's taking care of, actually permanently removing the source. The option that seemed most reasonable to us based on the site condition was something called a soil vapor extraction system. And it is just a really strong vacuum, you put, and these, this is like a, like a screened well or a well with a lot of slots in it, that pulls a lot of air into it and sucks it out. And so all these vapors that are in here, they would be the first things to go. But because these are volatile chemicals in the soil, they will, they will keep volatile, volatilizing as the, the contaminant concentrations are removed, and you'll actually get reductions in the concentrations in the soil. Well, if you operate that for long enough, then the concentration in the soil will reduce, and then, yeah, as a result, your concentrations in the vapor phase will also reduce. So this could be an option, and this is actually an option that we considered internally once all the data came in. I presented this internally as, this would be an option if we, if we really wanted to permanently fix the situation. We felt like we had enough initial data and information from where the soil contamination is, where the soil vapor contamination is. And we'd have to refine that a little bit, but this would have been an option we would have gone with. And typical system would have several of these extraction points. And this is just the house that houses the blower. This is a big vacuum blower, and it has its own electrical supply, and the, and the piping is in the subsurface. That's just kind of showing what it looks like, and that's, that's it. So.
Okay. And Billy, I think where the county's going to kind of tack on to your presentation and certainly allow the Board to ask any questions. If you want to ask questions now, or you want to wait till, till we finish going through the presentation process?
Anybody have any questions at this point?
I have a couple of questions. Does the, does the retrocoat have a lifespan? In other words, for example, if you're, if you and your annual mitigation monitoring see some numbers going up, does that mean that either the, the vacuum bags are failing or the vapor, the retrocoat maybe have a penetration or, or breach? Or what would that potentially mean?
Well, there's, there's a lot of things it can mean. Number one, the, the retrocoat has to be adequately, that we have to have enough data to know where to apply the retrocoat. So number one, if that's successfully determined and they install the retrocoat in that applicable location, it should reduce the concentrations. The lifespan, I really, I mean, it is, it's, the lifespan, it's really perpetual. It really comes down to how much, it can, it can withstand, I think, like, really heavy traffic over it. So it would just be, if, if the activity on top of it wasn't sufficient to degrade the material such that it couldn't, I mean, you know, we're talking lifetimes, as far as it would be. So, and all we're talking about is a library, so you wouldn't expect it to, to degrade. So it's, so it's efficiency or its capacity to not, to not be able to protect the building from vapors coming in, should be fine. Now, if there's, is there significant, and I'm getting a little maybe beyond my expertise here, but if, if there were sufficient, I mean, really significant cracks that developed as a result of settling, and we, we recognize that through our monitoring, then we would evaluate that, and we, as the state, we would take, you know, again, though, the only thing that could trigger the state to take action would be if the levels are unsafe. And if they, if they went unsafe levels, we would, that would, that would be the first step we would take.
So in order to, as far as a long-term mitigation potential, my question would be, for peace of mind for the users of the library and employees of the library, is there a way to try to, as you said, a permanent fix would be the vapor extraction blower? Is there a way, since you're limited annually on your budgeting and dividing by the number of sites that you deal with, is that something we can, you personally set a long-range mitigation goal? Is to set aside funding maybe until you can pay for that permanent fix? Or do you wait till you see numbers go up before you make that decision?
We, we wait, well, David's going to address a lot of this, but the state has to wait for there to be an unsafe condition. So if there's not an unsafe condition, and we are doing adequate monitoring to establish and determine if there's an, if it's safe or an unsafe condition, then we just, we just can't take action.
So that annual monitoring is going to reassure the public and the users and employees that the facility's safe?
Absolutely. And initially, we'll probably, we probably will monitor in the summer and the winter. And once we get a really good feel for the stability of the situation, then we'll just probably switch to annual monitoring. But we'll stay on top of it to make sure the safety of the public.
Sure. And we appreciate y'all's involvement and all you guys have done as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And Commissioner Howe, to expand on your question, we have talked, staff and the state, and Jen with Hart and Hickman, we have talked exhaustively about this, trying to figure out what the appropriate solution is. We approach this from the standpoint of, we want to make this safe, not just for our citizens, but for our employees as well. And what does that look like? The state and the Dry Cleaner Solvent Program, they are limited as far as what they can expend funds for. It's very clear, it has to meet certain criteria before they can expend funds. So, once we receive the bad news, the good news and the bad news, the good news is, what we're seeing inside of our facility, the library facility, is, is safe. So that's, what, what we're seeing is safe. The, and the bad news is, because it is safe, there is no funds to go any further with this. We talked about that internally, and we have a proposal back to the Board, staff does, because we got a very clear directive from the Board that we want to go above and beyond and make sure that it's not just safe for today, but it's safe long-term into the future going forward. So one of the things that we want to discuss with the Board is the possibility of the county moving forward with the retrocoat and doing that. We still have to go in and do work because in the sampling process, we bored holes into our floor, our concrete floors, we tore up carpet, drywall has been removed, and this is all during the, the monitoring process. So we still have to go in and do some work to restore the lower level. So we would like to talk to the Board a little bit further about going that extra step and doing that retrocoat before we go back and put all new carpet in and do this. If we're going to do- If we're going to do it, now is the appropriate time to do it. The state will continue to do the monitoring, and if there are any issues that arise that takes it to that unsafe level, then at that point, you know, we could come back and do something in addition. We could also talk about what we talked about with the permanent solution, and what one of the options with the permanent solution, the state actually talked about doing, but it didn't qualify as far as funding from this program, which is the vapor extraction. And if that's something that the board wants to look at, that of course would have to be a CIP solution, that would have to be something we would have to plan going forward. What we need to do right now, though, we need to get the lower floor ready to occupy again. And we, the library has been incredibly gracious, and they have switched their programs around, and they have gone without the lower floor for quite some time. But we're at that point that as far as the disturbance to that physical site, that's over, as far as the sampling part. So we need to restore, and we need, we need some direction from the board, what the board would like to do before we go through that carpet and restoring the lower floor to be able to open it again.
I have a couple of questions. The initial readings that we got that were taken seem more alarming than the numbers that you have. Could you expound on where you drew the lines as far as what's safe and where the contractor that initially did this work drew the other lines? And what accounts for the drop-off in terms of measurable results for the noncarcinogenic risks that occurred from early March to late April?
Okay, I've tried to keep this as simple as I can. Basically, the, the concentration that they were comparing it to, or the target, the target concentration they were comparing it to, was based on default exposure parameters, like somebody, a child being in the building for 250 days a year, eight hours a day, which is just not the situation that's present. That's not the, that's not what a person's being exposed to in the library. So when we worked with Ardell County to find out what was the more realistic exposure scenario, it drastically altered that number, that safe number. So, that's really the most simplified answer I can give you. And that concentration that's safe for an occupant, or somebody that's using the library, is actually higher than it is for the people working there. So now, the, the target level that we're really looking at is for the people working in the building. So originally, where the county was giving information that this was really a threat to children, and, you know, there's a sensitive, there's a sensitive subpopulation, which is, immediately when you see children, you need to check that out. But not accounting for that decreased exposure is what drove the risk levels up and really just kind of skewed the decision-making process for a little while.
One thing, maybe just to add on to that, there are screening levels that are set that are triggered to do more assessment, more sampling. And previously, they were looking at those screening levels in society. Okay, the screening level's been exceeded, we need to mitigate. And that's not necessarily what the screening levels are designed for. It's designed to be a trigger to look at it a little bit more closely, but not necessarily saying that it's unsafe.
Yeah, I mean, because it's just, we basically did a site-specific risk, human health risk assessment, and a site-specific risk assessment wasn't performed prior, and just that different information was to help make better decisions.
Okay. And what accounted for that drop-off over a two-month period?
The concentration drop-off?
Yeah.
Right now, okay, so when samples, sampling originally occurred, it sampled on a day when there was nobody occupying the library. And, I mean, I don't, I can't see, you know, the chemicals moving around, so I can only postulate or speculate as a professional. But during those days, there weren't people entering in and out of the library. There was no activity going on in the library, so that's not a normal occupancy condition. So the air exchange and the air turnover in the building was probably less, which could have increased the concentration, but that's the highest concentration we've seen. Then the library, David worked with them to introduce about 33% outdoor air into the damp, they opened the damper up, and that decreased the concentrations by about one-third. And then, then we sampled again after the, the lower floor was boarded up. But the way this whole thing works, remember I was talking about the pressure, the pressure kind of driving things? Well, when the, when that, the lower floor is boarded up, the heat moving from the lower floor to the upper floor actually can create something called the stack, a stacking effect, which induces a pressure gradient. So, we weren't really seeing normal occupancy conditions then, when the library, when the bottom floor was boarded up. So, then after we took the, we finally got what we feel like is a really representative sample round, and it remained low. But even so, under worst-case conditions, which aren't even normal occupancy conditions, we're still under safe, the concentrations are still below acceptable and safe risk levels. But that, I'm just trying to account, vapor intrusion, the whole phenomenon in and of itself is very, it's highly variable, so there's a million things moving at one time. But those are just the large generalizations that I can make about what we've done and what we've observed.
One other question. When you, when you're dividing your annual budget based on your sites, what is the potential, like in our case, we take a mitigation step to take care of some of this stuff, what's the potential recovering over time annually? That 18,000 to 20,000, whatever you would allow, is there a way to ask for that? Is there a way?
Sir.
So, you only would spend money in here other than monitoring annually, which you've committed to?
Yes, sir, unless we, unless we encounter an unsafe condition.
Unless something goes, unless something increases.
Yes, sir.
So that contingency money, as you called it, I think, is not available for any coatings, any other mitigation, unless the problem worsens?
That's right.
Okay.
Is that fund, a fixed fund? Or is it, are new appropriations made from?
Every, well, I mean, I'm, I don't know exactly all the, but the largest revenue stream comes from, there's a tax on the dry cleaning consumer, and there's also a tax on the dry cleaning solvent. But we have an annual revenue of around $6 million from everything, and we just manage it based off of that. And it seems like that's a pretty steady stream. It's slowly declining over time, but that's about where we are right now.
Any further questions?
Mr. Meyer, in your personal and professional opinion, based on the assumption that your children and my children are going to frequent that library three days a week, stay for a couple of hours each visit, is it safe like it is? Should we perform that retro? Option number one? Option number two? Or all of the above?
Well, I mean, my professional opinion, obviously, I'm bound by rules and regulations, so risk is, is really a relative, it's a perspective. The perspective of what risk is, is different for each individual. I'm bound by what's written, written into law, basically. But I certainly understand that it'd be in a public building, the state also took that into account, which is one reason why we reacted so, we tried to be as proactive, and again, the county worked with us so synergistically. But, so I'm going to answer in a professional, because personally, you know, I'm not, every person in here's perception of risk is different. Because like, some people may smoke in here, and you know, that's, that's a really big risk. But maybe to the person smoking, it's not. So, to, to answer your question, I would be comfortable, completely comfortable, allowing my children to go to the library as long as I knew that the state was, was doing their job. And that's what we're doing. We're doing our job. But from the county's perspective, I also understand that we do have this, we have this really high concentration, these really high concentrations of soil vapors knocking on the door of the, of the, of the, of the bottom floor. And that floor is occupied, and we do have evidence that vapor intrusion is occurring. Do you want to, I mean, so, you can be proactive and take a step and not roll the dice and wait for that condition to occur, or you can, I mean, but for, for me, because of the appropriation of funds and the, and comparatively spending it in, you know, a way that's, was the word I'm looking for, just relative to all the other sites in the state of North Carolina and the risk, I mean, I can, I can, I can definitely see taking action. It's just it's, according to our rules and statutes, I can't, the state can't do that right now.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question adequately?
Pretty much.
Okay.
So based on your professional opinion, the, potentially based on the vapor potential, the retrocoat may be sufficient before we would renovate and remodel back to use? Is that what your professional opinion is?
If adequately installed, that is an excellent idea. I mean, it would.
I mean, based on the numbers that exist today, your mitigation recommendation number one, I think, was the retrocoat.
Mm-hmm.
Correct? You would think, in your professional opinion, that would be sufficient before we would remodel, before, you know, and you would continue monitoring, and then everybody would have to react to that if something changed?
Yes.
Because that's the, that's the level, based on what we can control potentially at this point, based on what we know, to prevent the vapors from coming in. Is there, is the coat to keep them out?
Yes, that's a very, I'll say it's a, it's a very obvious step to take to reduce the vapors from coming inside.
That's what I think a minimum step would need to be on our part.
I think it's a very.
If I'm reading what you said right.
Minimum, and it's a very good step, very adequate step.
Actually, the minimum step is to do nothing.
We can't do that.
Because it's safe. It's safe, so the minimum step is to do nothing. To take an additional step for an additional assurance is to do the retrocoat. And if we're going to do that, now is the time before we go and re-carpet.
That's what I'm saying, because if you don't, it's like rebuilding the tops parts of your engine, and you already got it tore apart, it's going to cost you more to go back in.
Correct.
So, before you remodel, you might as well go ahead and do your coating if you're going to, before you remodel, in my opinion, or you're going to spend more money in the long run.
Let's hear from David.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I just got, I got one more question, maybe, from Mr. Meyer before he goes. And I guess my question is, with the retrocoat or whatever, we're, we're never going to get rid of this. All we can do is manage to mitigate the damage. Is that correct? Unless we go in and decide to dig as far as we can dig?
Well, I mean, you wouldn't, in this situation, you wouldn't have to dig. You could do the vacuum extraction I was talking about. It's a whole lot, in this situation, probably cheaper, just, just based on just some general number crunching. So, yeah, I mean, it's still going to, it's always going to be there unless you get in there and you remove that, that source of contamination.
The, the permanent solution would be the last option, the vapor extraction system. That would be a more permanent solution.
It's kind of like having glasses, so I can, I can't, having contacts, so I have contacts, and I have to buy, for, you know, about $500 worth a year, and I have to do that for the rest of my life. But if they, and that's mitigation, it corrects my vision and all that kind of stuff. If I wanted to fix the problem, I'd get lazy surgery, which is, you know, it's a good investment. I probably want to spend it less over time. But, I mean, that's really about the best analogy I can make, that's not too far-fetched. But, but you're right. I mean, if it, if it remains out there, there's always, it's always going to be bumping up against that retrocoat. And as long as that retrocoat's working, it won't make, it won't make it inside.
Well, to get across the lake without getting our feet wet, we can either take the boat we're in, and it may leak a little, or we can waterproof the boat, or we can drain the lake.
Yes, and this gentleman right here, what he stated about coming in, so if there was an unsafe condition and we had to come in afterwards, it would be much more invasive. If they've already reoccupied the library, that's going to be a much more involved process and could displace folks again. So, I mean, that's just, that's just reality.
Thank you very much. And Billy and Jenna, we very much appreciate the alacrity in which we responded to our initial inquiries, once we got this thunderbolt out of the blue. And I do want to recognize our library staff, Director Steve Messick, and what a great response that the library staff had. You know, they immediately took positive action to move all that stuff off the first floor. The genealogical folks moved their stuff out. It was, I don't think it's, you'd say it was an enjoyable excuse for spring cleaning, but you certainly did clean out the place and did so in less than a week. It was over a weekend, basically, with minimal disruption to services. And so, just please tell the staff once again that we are very appreciative of all of their efforts and your staff's efforts to, you know, provide the level of monitoring and analysis and recommendations. It was, you know, it's, it's how government is supposed to work, you know, it's, you answered the call.
Well, I second that, because you guys really stepped up to the plate, too. Really appreciate you guys.
And, and we want to make sure that our staff and our patrons feel exceedingly comfortable in working and patronizing the library. That's our focus, to, to address that perception of risk that you were discussing, Billy. Okay, well, thank you. And to do, to discuss the potential remediation and protection efforts, David Slevy, would you share what you have with us?
Okay, you've heard the what, and you've heard the why, and now I'm going to talk to you about the how, how we're going to do it. Now, this is one of the most dangerous parts of this presentation, because we're going to give you an estimate. And the danger is that estimates always turn into, this is exactly what it's going to cost. So, remember, we have not gone out to take bids, but we've got the best estimates that we can. And this how we're going to do it is really broken up into, into three pieces. So I'll, I'll carefully go to this next slide, which is the only slide I have, believe it or not, Risa. And this project, as we call it, is preparing the area for coating. Now, they spoke, we spoke about retrocoat, but it's a coating system. Now, this coating system that I'm going to talk about just in a minute, most of the time in our new projects, we have coated under the concrete slab with a very thick mill of a, not a moisture barrier, but a vapor barrier, and it's sealed and it's tight. And this, and so these vapors, whether it's dry cleaning solvent or radon, cannot get through. Well, this library doesn't have that. Library was built about 2003 or '04, Steve, close? And it was not put down. We have a vapor, we have a moisture barrier, but not a vapor barrier. So, the only option we have besides tearing up the library and starting over is put the same protection on top of the concrete. Okay? So, to prepare the area for coating, it means everything that is touching the concrete in the, in the part of the library that we're concerned with, that everything's touching concrete has to be taken off the concrete. We've got to get down to hard concrete as it was put in before it was finished or anything. Okay? So, we've identified, with the help of Jenna's group and Billy's group, we've identified about close to 8,000 square feet of combination floor and wall that is in contact with the soil that we have to coat, this coating system. Now, what this, prepare the area for coating means is that everything, all metal studing, all sheet rock, all carpet, anything that's touching that area, even the edge of the, of the studs on the internal walls that is in that targeted area, has to be exposed. There's a lot of stuff down there. Now, we've, we've removed a lot of shelving. There's nothing down there now, but carpet and things. So, to do that, our estimate, folks, please estimate, is $34,000. That's the, Chairman, Chairman helped me out, I was going to use the word demolition, and that's what we call it in the construction world. But to prepare the area for coating, it's going to cost us about that much, to take everything out, to get down to concrete. Now, the coating process itself, and this is, this $88,000 you're looking at for coating is not just for the coating, but we also are planning a third-party inspector to come in to ensure that it's put in per the spec, per the thickness, per the mill that is called for, and the, and the surface is prepared correctly, it's installed correctly, it's cured correctly, and we're ready to go back. And it's not like taking it down to concrete and then we're ready to go. We've examined the walls behind the sheet rock, and those walls were formed up with this plain old plywood, which means it's a rough surface. Okay? And there's pits in it. It has to be slick, because this coat, these coating systems don't just fill up all the cracks, they actually seal it. That means. That means they have to get down into the pinholes and things. So, there's a lot of manual labor, hand sanding, and just get the whole area, all 8,000 square feet has to be slick. Now, on the floor, you gotta remember that the floor has carpet. And the original carpet was not like the, the peel and stick that we're using these days. It was glued down. And what's under that is a very tough glue that's hard. It's hard as wood. So, it has to be ground off, and then the, and then the whole area prepared. And then, once the area is repaired, then they put a cleaner, and then they put a primer on it made for this coating system. And then they put the coating system on, and then they caulk around all of the corners, everything that, that touches this contaminated surface, and then it's ready to go back. And then after that, we remodeled it, and the, and the complete remodeling is carpet and painting, uh, for the entire area. New ceramic tile for the bathrooms, because we've got a lot of bathrooms in that area that, that has to come out. And it's about a $97,000 expenditure to go back with that. We've added in a $15,000 contingency, and we've been very fortunate on our project so far, not to touch hardly any contingency, but we better put it there, because we don't know what else is under there. That helps us out. Now, I will say that the library staff, uh, they sure helped us out a lot, because they, they cleared out the area, as you said, Chairman. And they had a lot of worn, wore-out furniture. Uh, I think it was brought in from other places, I'm not sure, but a lot of that stuff was not good to start with. So, to replace some furniture and replace some cabinetry that we've had to tear up just to get to the floor, there's about an $11,500 expenditure there. Total project for the coating system, uh, estimate, please, $245,900. Uh, Deb, Deborah Cheek, I always have to go slowly with that, or I will say Deb Alford. Deb Cheek is here if there's any questions, but we have identified, uh, funding in the CIP for that, uh, this year. And we would propose that we move forward as soon as possible. I would say that once all the contracts and all the bidding's over with, this is probably about a six-month project. Then, moving everything back in, because all the shelving, everything is stored now. Get everything back in and hopefully get the library up and running in a very safe manner. Uh, but this system is there. This is not just a paint system. And, uh, a lot of times, that these coating systems are made to walk on. But we're going to be going back with carpet on it and some tile on top of that. So, it, to answer your question, it could go on forever, because it, it won't be touched. It won't be rubbed, it won't be damaged, unless the building itself settles. And we've been in it now 14 years. I would say any settling probably would have already started happening. So, that's the first phase of it. And we propose that we do that this year, this budget year, starting as soon as we can. And then, uh, as, as Beth was saying, that we, uh, that we, that we put into the CIP, this extraction system, which is the permanent solution.
If the board chooses to do that.
If the board choo-, yes, yes.
That is, uh, our, our first priority is, if the board wants to do the, um, do this coating, we need to do that now, so we can get the, the facility back open, open and operational. So, but if there's something the board wants to consider in future years for a permanent solution, then we can go back and look at the vapor extraction system.
And we can put that in the CIP.
Correct.
And if the board chooses to do that, we can, we can certainly, uh, move forward with that in future years. So, we got a now solution, and then a more permanent solution, as you would say, drain the lake.
Do we have an idea of what, uh, do we have an idea of what it's gonna cost for the permanent solution, ballpark?
Ballpark, uh, the install was about $250,000. Uh, there was about a $30,000 to $40,000 a year operational maintenance, uh, monitoring of that years after that. Uh, and from what we've gathered from the, from the professionals, that, uh, th- this could be a four- to five-year cleanup. It, it doesn't last as long as gas tanks, and, you know, remember how they used to monitor those for 20 years or more? Well, so.
So, we're, so we're five, we're $500,000 counting, monitoring and all, then roughly, maybe?
If the board chose to do both, correct?
But.
Both, now.
Well, you would be at $245,900 based on this first estimate, and the permanent mitigation's an additional $250.
Correct.
Plus five, plus fifty.
Thirty thousand a year for five years.
Correct.
Correct.
That's another $150. So, you're at $650 to permanently fix it, potentially.
Yes.
But if you chose to do, to do the coating first, this would be the first step. This would get us back operational in the library. And then we can actually plan, if the board chose to do that, we can actually plan for years out, uh, at a certain point, to put in the extraction system and then monitor for years after that.
So, what are the funding options for, uh, the first phase?
The first phase, we've identified some funding in our capital improvement program that's already in the budget with our CIP. So, we are, um, we're recommending to use funds in the CIP that's already budgeted this year. So, there won't be a budget amendment, um, there won't be anything like that. It won't be coming out of fund balance, it'll be coming out of our CIP.
What will it take to place us, where we obviously have a budget for something else?
We, we have, we have found some savings in some of those projects that were already in there, and we did put a little cushion, because what we have found is all of these are estimates. And when we typically go to do something, it normally costs more. So, we put a little extra cushion in there in case some of our estimates, because we're planning, you know, 18 months in advance and things and getting estimates. So, we always put a little bit of a cushion. So, we've, we feel that we have this covered in our budget with some cost savings and with that contingency that we built into our CIP. We think we can cover it with that.
So, do you have a budget amendment that we can?
There's no need for a budget amendment. We will just be taking it out of our CIP budget.
And that's even figuring out, we, we've missed our estimate on the roof of this building, and it's gonna be more, we have enough contingent on that to cover that?
We do have, um, I have another creative solution to bring back to the board at a next meeting regarding this project. So, uh, I'm working with Deborah Cheek on that right now to see what our options are, because this project has been a little bit more exhaustive than what we initially anticipated. But I've got to get more information before I bring that back to the board, so.
How soon do we have to make a decision on this?
It's certainly at the board's pleasure, the, sooner the better, in all honesty. So, we could go ahead and start the process, because it is gonna be about a six-month process to go through this. But what we were, what we are requesting and proposing tonight is just the, the coating. And then, we can consider during the budget process, if the board wants to go forward with a more permanent solution with a vapor extraction. But if, if the board would be willing to make a decision in the next month or so, we would certainly need that in order to move forward.
Is, is there a timeframe on, let's say you did the prep work and the coating. Is there a recommendation that you wait before you would move forward with reoccupying that area to, for your readings in, on a, the next annual basis? Or you're saying, once it's coded, you think it's ready to remodel and move?
We, once it's coded, before we would do anything else, we would resample.
But I will, I will go back and point out what, uh, Mr. Meyer was saying earlier. Right now, according to their guidelines, it's safe to occupy as-is. So, according to the state's guidelines, it is safe to open the doors and occupy now. What this proposal is, is to go that extra step and eliminate those vapors from coming in. But right now, according to the state's guidelines and all of their data, it's safe to occupy now, doing nothing.
But it's gonna take some cost to put it back together from where we put it apart.
Correct, and so that's, that's kind of what we're saying, planning forward. Over time, if anything settles, or if we have any issues, or you have, you know, cracks or anything like that, you may have more vapor coming into the building in the future years. So, we've got the expense. We're, we're gonna have to go back and put, for example, the remodeling. We're gonna have to go back and do that in '97 anyway, because we tore up carpet, we tore out sheet rock in order to be able to see what our exposure is. So, we're gonna have that '97 anyway. What we're saying is, for some additional funds, we could prepare for the future and help go that extra step and put this, this vapor barrier and this coating.
Well, my question is, is what are, what is another option of not using that area? And I'm saying, if you, if you spent, the, the, if you didn't have to do the '97, you didn't, you did the coating, that area down there is the most contaminated area. Is there another option on occupying another space somewhere, uh, you know, until we know if those numbers are gonna go up? Because what I'm saying is, the permanent fix, that's the same cost as this total fix, would potentially, would it prevent having to do the coating? If it's safe now, and you did the outside venting.
Right.
The blower at $250. Could you save the hundred and a quarter, or whatever, out of this $245, because you're putting a permanent fix on the outside vapor?
We looked at that, and part of the problem is, we don't have space right now. So, we would have to probably lease space. And we're talking about a five- or six-year, a possibly five- or six-year timeframe for this vapor extraction system to work and completely mitigate. So, we would not be able to occupy back that bottom floor for about five or six years. And the expense of leasing is certainly gonna be more expensive than, than what this coating would be. So, the coating is something to allow us to occupy immediately. The permanent fix, which is gonna be about four or five, maybe even six years, while that may be a permanent fix, it's gonna take time to completely pull all of that out of the soil. So, it's really, if you're gonna go back and occupy the building, and you do wanna go that extra step, the coating is your first step. That way, you can go ahead and occupy the building. The permanent fix is gonna take five or so years before it's completely eradicated.
So, if we, we take this, uh, does the staff feel comfortable enough going back to working there in the, that level of the library?
Yes. If we do the coating, correct, yes.
Because our experts from the state says that it is safe right now.
They say it's perfectly fine to go back now, correct.
We're taking an extra step there to ensure the safety and the health of our.
I don't, I don't have to answer them, I'm gonna answer these people.
That's right.
And we're dealing with a perception of risk.
Yeah.
And we don't want any perception of risk. Uh, and I think the coating addresses the, the immediate issues. It, it, if, if we don't do that, and we reoccupy and decide we need to do that, we've got to take everything out again.
Again.
Um, and then incur the rental costs and all that. Um, since the, I would ask if, if there's a sense for the board to just go ahead and move and approve the Phase One this evening?
I, I think we need to think on this, and, and let's, I say we table it till our November 20th meeting. There's a, there's a lot of if, ands, and buts here. Uh, we may get out for $246. We may be on the hook for $350 or more when we get into it, 'cause every time I've ever remodeled anything, I had no idea what it was gonna cost when it finally got done. I had a good guess, but I had no idea. And when you're talking about trying to mitigate a problem like we've got, I, I don't, I, it's, this may be a never-ending.
Well, let me ask you this. What, what are we gonna know 30 days from now that we don't really know now?
The only thing that I could offer is that we could go ahead and go through the bidding process. We already know what the exposure is. We always, we already know what the contaminants are. We, and these estimates are probably gonna be what some of the bids are.
So, if we go forward with the bidding process, we don't lose any, we don't lose a step. We don't lose a month.
Well, I don't.
We have the ability to decide, well, no, we just don't wanna do that.
Uh, right now, you know, we, right now, it's vacated, it's stable. They're operating upstairs, a little cramped, but they're.
Then it would normally take how long to do the bidding process anyhow?
Uh, Deb?
Okay, at least 60 days.
Four to six weeks, possibly. Possibly four to six weeks of bidding, um, if we.
I'm willing, I'm willing to look at the bids. I'm willing to go ahead and set us bid. I ain't saying I'm really necessarily set ready to go with the project, but I'm willing to look at the bids. I, I'm just, I, I, no offense to your ability to project, but.
No ability to project, none. Do the best we can.
I, I just, I'm just afraid we're, we're getting ready to step in off a cliff, and, and I don't know when the bottom's gonna be.
Beth, can we get together with the General Government Task Force and talk about some other options? I mean, this is the first we've heard of this. There's a lot to digest at one time without thinking it through.
We can.
I'd like to go ahead and start the bidding process.
That's what I was gonna say, if we direct them tonight to start the bidding process, then internal staff can meet.
I'm good with that, I mean, that doesn't lose a step, I mean, it doesn't lose us anything.
Well, we, we need to, we need to know what a real number is.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would make a motion that we move forward with the bidding process on the retrocoat to find out, to see, try to get as, drill down to as close a number as we possibly can. I'd make that motion tonight that we move forward with that step.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles, any further discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We will revisit this. Uh, once again, uh, Steve, please pass on our appreciation to your staff, and that we are moving forward. Okay, at this time, let's take a five-minute break.
Then we can swap a floor with a jail.
We'll be back for Mr. Cooksey, Ms. Lear. Accounted for here?
I think so.
All right. Well, we will resume our session. And this evening, for those of you that are watching on television, or those of you who are here for the press, we have a tag-team presentation between Jane Lear, who represents I-77 Mobility Partners, which is responsible for the construction of the Interstate seventy-seven toll lanes, and Warren Cooksey, who is the Director of Outreach and Community Affairs for the Turnpike Authority of North Carolina Department of Transportation.
On my note.
Now, I know this is a hot topic, a very contentious political issue, this board itself. Prior to the signing of the contract with Centra, had implored Governor McCrory to go slow and to take into account other alternatives or changes in circumstances in terms of revenues in the state. That was not heated, and there's been significant back and forth in the legislature and in the North Mecklenburg area and South Iredal area. But the fact is, we've got toll lanes that are well underway and will be scheduled to be completed, at least partially, that will be completely usable from the point of entry in Iredal County to the termination point in Uptown Charlotte. Notice, we start in Iredal County, we end up in Charlotte. So that is supposed to be done by the end of the year. That's not all the access points. There's some flyovers that have special access points that will be coming on later down the road, so to speak. So we're gonna get an update on the structure and the construction from Ms. Lear, followed by a presentation for Warren Cooksey from the Department of Transportation, who, as I said, is, well, I didn't say, he's going to discuss the tolling process and how those tolls are collected and assessed, the mechanism for that. And then people can be prepared over the next two and a half months to purchase the transponders if they are likely to use the facility. And so without further ado, I'll turn things over to Jane.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity for inviting us here tonight to give you an update on the project. We do have a couple handouts in front of you. Those same handouts are also available on our website at I77express.com, if anybody in the public arena is interested in going and looking at them on the website. I-77 Mobility Partners is financing, developing, designing, constructing, operating, and maintaining I-77 Express. NCDOT remains the owner of the roadway. They also provide oversight of I-77 Express to ensure that all requirements of the contract for the project are met. The North Carolina Turnpike Authority is responsible for managing NC QuickPass accounts, transponder distribution, and customer service through the NC QuickPass program. The NC QuickPass Customer Service Center is located at eighty fifteen West W.T. Harris Boulevard in Charlotte. I-77 Mobility Partners was chosen by NCDOT as the best bid proposer for the I-77 Express project. I-77 Express is delivered as a design-build project, which allows for real-time changes to the construction plans and scope to deliver the best possible project. Our offices are located in Charlotte, and our employees live, work, and play in the communities from Mooresville to Charlotte. I-77 Mobility Partners, as the developer and its investors, directly invested more than two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. Project financing also includes two-hundred-and-eighty-nine million of project debt. The private investment is instrumental for the construction of I-77 Express and other infrastructure improvements along the existing portion of I-77, including the ability to deliver the project sooner for the state of North Carolina and its motorists. Tolls paid to use I-77 Express go toward paying operations and maintenance costs and debt service of the roadway before investors start seeing a return on their investment. I-77 Express consists of twenty-six miles of dedicated toll-express lanes that will operate adjacent to the existing general-purpose lanes. I-77 Express is separated from the existing general-purpose lanes and have an interior shoulder for enhanced safety. There will be two express lanes per direction that will run from I-277 in Charlotte to just south of Exit twenty-eight in Cornelius. One express lane will run in each direction from Cornelius to just past Exit thirty-six in Mooresville. The same number of existing free lanes will remain along the entire highway in both directions. Drivers will have a choice whether to use I-77 Express, the general-purpose lanes, or a combination of each. Dynamic pricing will be used to maintain a minimum average speed on I-77 Express, which will assist with traffic flow in all lanes. All along the corridor, existing infrastructure is being greatly improved in both the general-purpose lanes and the express lanes. Since signing the original contract, additional work was added to the project scope to improve the roadway for drivers. We have worked closely with NCDOT in determining these project improvements and adjusted timelines to accommodate the broader scope of work. And we'll talk about the following improvements as part of the additional work. I-77 Mobility Partners has added connections between seventy-seven Express and I-85, which will improve capacity to the interchange and better-serve drivers. These connections are funded by additional developer equity. We've also added additional entry and exit points for I-77 Express in the Lake Norman area to improve the connectivity between existing crossing streets and the express lanes. I-77 Express will now be accessible to and from exits twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-eight, and thirty. These connections are also funded by additional developer equity. Redesigned connection with I-277 will allow the use of the main streets accessing Uptown Charlotte to and from the I-77 Express lanes. The redesign also minimized impacts to adjacent neighborhoods in this area. The Regional Planning Organization added the new Lakeview and Hambright Road direct connectors for improved access to I-77. This change order for these direct connectors was signed in July of 2017. When the direct connectors are completed in 2019, drivers will have direct access to I-77 Express in both directions. I-77 Mobility Partners is also expediting the improvements to the condition of the general-purpose lanes on behalf of NCDOT. So in addition to the original requirement to resurface the existing road, the general-purpose lanes in this twenty-six-mile corridor are being rehabilitated to provide better driving conditions through a process that we call mill and fill. The northern half of the rehabilitation is almost complete, and the southern portion of the rehabilitation will begin in 2019 when temperatures allow. This work will occur overnight when traffic is lighter, and if traffic needs to be diverted into the express lanes during lane closures, drivers will not be charged a toll. A majority of the I-77 Express will open as scheduled by the end of this year. However, the expanded scope of the project means that part of I-77 Express will open in 2019 to allow for the additional construction to be completed. In the case, I-77 Express opens to traffic before all sections are complete, with the exception of the direct connectors, we will apply a discount to the toll rates described in this presentation. I-77 Mobility Partners assumed maintenance and operations for the entire twenty-six-mile corridor in October of 2017. So motorists have a team available twenty-four-seven that is fully dedicated to monitor the corridor and maintain both the general-purpose lanes and I-77 Express to the same level of quality. Crews conduct roadway maintenance, such as debris cleanup, vegetation control, and road repairs. They also assist law enforcement and emergency responders in incident response with traffic control, roadway cleanup, and coordinating traffic removal. The team has provided roadside assistance, such as changing tires, providing signaling, fuel, or water to more than nine-hundred motorists in need since beginning of operations. Motorists that have received assistance from our crews between April and June gave an excellent rating for all completed surveys. I-77 Express will have eleven access points in each direction. All of the entrances and exits have been placed to allow safe movement to be to or from the closest general-purpose ramp. All lanes, all merge lanes will exceed the minimum standards of five-hundred feet per lane change. Merge lanes will be fifteen-hundred to two-thousand feet long in most locations. And one additional merge lane has been added to the transfer areas to improve safety. Signs will be strategically placed along the corridor to allow motorists ample time to decide if I-77 Express is the best option for their trip. Rates will be displayed a quarter mile ahead of each segment entry. The toll rate that is displayed when entering I-77 Express is the price motorists will be charged for that segment. Toll rates posted on the I-77 Express signs will display the transponder rate. Additional digital message signs will alert motorists to any traffic conditions ahead. I-77 Express will be divided in two segments. Each segment represents the portion of I-77 Express between an entry and exit point. Each segment will have its own toll rate and will always be displayed ahead of each Our two basic principles regarding pricing are that prices should always be aligned to the extent possible with the demand for using I-77 Express. And prices should be adequate to keep traffic on I-77 Express at average speeds above a minimum speed that ranges from forty-eight to fifty-six miles per hour, depending on the segment, as specified in our contractual requirements and federal law. Toll segments vary in length and have different traffic patterns throughout the day, so rates will vary by segment, direction, and time period based on those factors. Having multiple segments and multiple entry and exit points allows more flexibility for I-77 Express users to plan their trips and pay for only the portions of I-77 Express that they use. On a road, the number of cars, which is the volume, and the speed of those cars are related. As volume increases, speed normally decreases as roads become congested. The dynamic adjustment of toll rates allows I-77 Express to manage in real-time varying traffic and demand conditions in order to maintain an average minimum speed. For example, if volume on I-77 Express increases and speeds decrease, prices will rise in order to ease demand for I-77 Express, bringing the system back into balance. As specified in our contract with NCDOT, there are two different modes of adjusting the toll rates. Schedule mode will apply during the first one-hundred-and-eighty days from the opening of traffic on I-77 Express. During schedule mode, toll rates are defined for every thirty-minute period of every day of the week and won't change in real-time. This allows I-77 Express drivers to get used to the facility, knowing the applicable rate for their trip beforehand. The full schedule of rates for this period can be found on our webpage at I77express.com, and you also have a handout in front of you. Dynamic mode will apply after the first one-hundred-and-eighty days from the opening of traffic on I-77 Express until the end of the term. During dynamic mode, toll rates may change as often as every five minutes to accommodate changes in demand for I-77 Express. The toll rates per segment and the time of day for NC QuickPass users will be the following during the first one-hundred-and-eighty days of operation of the project. We have several examples there, and they are on the sheets in front of you. For example, on the main line from Lantry Road to mile marker thirty-six, the AM peak period going northbound is ninety cents, and the southbound peak period is eighty cents. Here are several trip examples for schedule mode as well. And from I-77, Exit eleven in Charlotte, to I-77, Exit thirty-six, the rush hour, which we call the peak time, which is the highest time for rates. If you traveled the entire portion from Exit eleven to Exit thirty-six during rush hour, it was six dollars and fifty-five cents; midday or weekends, four dollars and twenty cents. The toll rates per segment after the initial one-hundred-and-eighty days of operation will be set between the minimum and maximum value shown in the following table. In peak periods, the toll rates are expected to be closer to the upper limit. In off-peak periods, toll rates will be in the middle of the range. And at night, the toll rates will be in the lower end of the range. All toll rates will be reevaluated and adjusted dynamically as often as every five minutes. The minimum and maximum toll rates per segment will be adjusted periodically in accordance with the contract and North Carolina law. And here we have a rate for the dynamic mode rates. You will see that when dynamic mode begins, the lower end of the rate is between thirty and thirty-five cents. The maximum rate during peak period is two dollars and thirty-five cents. You can visit I77express.com at any time to see this information. Our website will also soon contain other resources that will help people plan their trips. We will have an average pricing calculator on the website for people to use, and we will also have a Plan Your Trip tool, so you can put in your origin and your destination, and it will show you how to use the express lanes and the cost for using the express lanes. And now I will turn it over to... And now I will turn it over to Warren.
All righty. Thank you, Jean. We'll dive right into, having seen the product, how to pay for it. Chairman Mallory, members of the board, county staff, everybody else. I do bring you greetings on behalf of the North Carolina Turnpike Authority, a business unit of the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Although we're a little special in a number of ways, we have our own board, and our focus since our creation in 2002 has been on operating tolling projects in North Carolina for about seven years now. The only one we've had has been the Triangle Expressway in Wake and Durham Counties, but we are looking forward to expanding our role here in the greater Statesville region. So with the onset of these projects coming, one of the lessons we learned from the Triangle Expressway is that we did need to do a better job of explaining to local elected officials, local community staffs, and local civic groups what some of the details of tolling are, because if a constituent of yours has some sort of issue, they may come to you first, and we don't want you to be blindsided by some of the details of our process. I'm not going to get deep into the weeds of our terms and conditions and business policies and the like, but these are some core elements that we tell our customers, we show our customers on our website, but we did want to make sure that all local officials had their own version of the presentation to prepare you for what's coming. So Tolling 101, What You Need to Know. The first thing I'd note is that the I-77 Express lanes is not the only tolling project coming to the region. It doesn't get covered a lot, but we've also had a contractor in Union County building a roughly 18-mile-long, brand-new highway formerly known as the Monroe Bypass, but we lovingly call it the Monroe Expressway, which will be a more traditional all-toll facility, about which I'll speak more a little later in the program. But something that we've noticed with the Turnpike Authority is, according to all of our sources, we are not aware of any other agency that has been involved with introducing tolling to a region that has never had it before with both a traditional fixed-rate toll facility and a variable toll facility in the same year. So we're used to setting records with the Turnpike Authority. Our electronic tolling process is called NC QuickPass, that's our brand, and the first lesson I like to teach about tolling in North Carolina is that we do not believe in toll booths here. We don't want you to stop as you're traveling along wherever you need to go to have to pay a toll. The sample you see in the middle photo there is of a gantry, not a toll booth, a gantry in the Triangle Expressway, that's our toll zone that cars travel under all the time. And there, as you can see on the left and right, sufficient electronics to take care of the tolling process without asking anybody to stop and throw coins at a basket or hand over money or have exact change only, as some other facilities do. We don't do that in North Carolina. Since you're not paying when you travel, there are two options to pay. One of them is to pay us ahead of time. That's where the whole transponder account process comes into play. The prepaid account system is triggered by our transponders, more about which I'll talk in a moment, and we deduct tolls incurred from that prepaid account amount. Think of this as your tolling account, and the transponder is the debit card. For those who want to pay afterwards, the equipment in each toll gantry will take a photo of the driver's license plate, or the vehicle's license plate, rather, and send a bill by mail to the registered owner of that plate. After the first bill by mail is sent, we recently unveiled an email option for bill by email for those who want the convenience of getting their bill by email instead of paper and yet still don't want to, for one reason or another, open a transponder account with us. Jean hinted at this, but I appreciate her not stealing my thunder for the express reveal. Key difference between paying ahead of time and paying afterward is that the NC QuickPass transponder tolls are 35% less, generally speaking, than the bill-by-mail rate. State statute establishes that the bill-by-mail rate is the standard toll rate, and the Turnpike Authority may offer a discount to customers who pay in advance and use the transponder account. So we do. We have three transponders that will meet most people's needs. There are a few specialty ones, but I'll cover the three main ones in this presentation. First is our standard NC QuickPass. It's this little sticker here. You see on the image of the slide how it just affixes to your windshield. You can hide it behind a rearview mirror and never have to see it. We'll give you one of these for each car that you sign up on your account, no charge for the sticker. Think of it as your local option, because it will allow you to pay tolls in North Carolina on Peach Pass facilities in Georgia and Sun Pass facilities in Florida. So it's your local southeast option will give you one free for each car. If you do more traveling, you may find it better to get one of these hard cases, the NC QuickPass EZ Pass, also affixes to your windshield, in this case with Velcro strips. This transponder has additional technology in it that lets you pay tolls in all the EZ Pass states, in addition to North Carolina, Georgia, and Florida. And because of the additional technology in there, there is a one-time cost for this one, as you see, $7.40 plus tax, one time. We have some customers who've been with us since the very beginning of the Triangle Expressway, they're still using the original transponder they got with us. Finally, for I-77, we have unveiled and rolled out the NC QuickPass EZ Pass Flex, and I hope we stop here, because I don't know if I can tolerate a longer name for the transponder. This works for, just like the regular hard case that I showed you, you can pay tolls with this transponder in EZ Pass states in North Carolina, Georgia, and Florida, but it also has a switch on it that allows you to declare your vehicle as a high-occupancy vehicle with three or more people in it. If you find yourself traveling on 77 near the express lanes, and there are you, the driver, and at least two other people, you have this transponder. It's the easiest way to travel toll-free in the I-77 Express lanes, because the arrangement with those lanes is that a high-occupancy vehicle that is identifiable as such can travel toll-free. This is the first and easiest way to identify yourself as an HOV vehicle. I'll talk about a few more a little later on, but folks I've talked with really like the convenience of this, switch on, switch off. For those who go with the bill-by-mail option, we have, over the years, changed our envelope design a good bit to make sure that people do realize there's an invoice enclosed. We have had some difficulty with that, and so bill-by-mail is really the meat of this presentation tonight. Works like any other bill that you get in the mail, the US Postal Service delivers it. Open it up, in the upper right, there's the amount due, the date it's due by, certain other details. The invoice includes a photo of the license plate that our cameras took, so that you can confirm that it is the license plate that belongs to your address. And below it are a list of all the toll zones that plate was photographed going through. We do aim to be a very customer-friendly organization, so we have multiple ways to pay this bill. One is to go online to ncquickpass.com, our website. You can pay the bill there. Alternatively, call a customer service representative at 877-MYPASS, and that customer service representative will take your invoice number and take your payment over the phone. If you want to use a good old-fashioned stamp, envelope, and check, we have a post office box to which you can mail the payment. That does still happen. And finally, if you want that personal touch, you can come to any of our customer service centers and pay the bill that we've sent. More about where those are a little later in the presentation. Payment is due within 30 days of the bill being sent out, so do pay close attention to what the date is on the bill when it arrives. As I mentioned, for those who go online to pay the bill, we do have the option for bill by email. It doesn't create a lower rate, this is still the bill-by-mail rate, but it does have a more convenient delivery for a number of our customers. We've had several thousand people sign up for the bill-by-mail option in the Triangle. Inevitably, the question arises, what if I don't pay? If I've traveled in a toll facility, didn't have the transponder, didn't pay in advance, got the bill, what happens? Well, we are governed by state statute on this. Every government entity I speak with nods in recognition of having to follow what state statute says about a process. The easiest way to deal with it, of course, is to pay that first invoice, because all it's going to contain is the bill-by-mail toll amount incurred by the vehicle with the license plate that was photographed. If, however, that invoice isn't paid, we are authorized by statute to send a second invoice, carry forward that unpaid balance, any other tolls added, plus add a $6 processing fee. If this bill doesn't get paid on our third invoice, carry forward the unpaid balance, $6 processing fee again, and now by law, there's a $25 civil penalty for failure to pay the invoice, plus any additional tolls that were incurred since the last one. We're up to $37 now in fees and penalties that don't have to be paid if only that first invoice gets paid. By the fourth, under statute, we do that $25 civil penalty only once in this type of billing cycle, but by the fourth invoice, we are back to, we still have the $6 processing fee, but at this point, we can now place a registration block on the license plate. We are one of several agencies in the state that can do that. If you go to DMV's website and look, there's a list of things that can occur that lead to a registration block, and failure to pay a toll to the Turnpike Authority is on that list. We can also, at that point, send the bill to a collections agency, and nobody likes dealing with those. Turning to the Monroe Expressway project, which I'm sure y'all haven't seen a lot about it here in Ardell County, but it is roughly 18 miles end-to-end that started life known as the Monroe Bypass, but we're calling it the Monroe Expressway. It is a four-lane median-divided highway, signed at 65 miles per hour for the vast majority of its length. Each green dot is an interchange to get on or get off of it, just like a traditional highway. In between are the gantries that people will travel under. As you see, we are very comfortable saying you'll save more than 15 minutes of travel time through Union County in it. Some people will save more, depending on how much effort they have to take to stop at any of the 25 traffic signals, more than 25 traffic signals on existing US 74 that this expressway will go around. How much it costs, keep in mind, the Monroe Expressway is structured as a more traditional toll facility. There are no free lanes on the Monroe Expressway, everybody pays, and the primary purpose of the toll is to pay for the debt of the road. The lowest rate I can quote you for travel on the Monroe Expressway is $0.14 a mile, $2.54 end-to-end. That's if you're in a two-axle vehicle using the NC QuickPass or other transponder that we read. So that's the transponder rate end-to-end. Another reminder that those NC QuickPass transponder tolls are 35% less than the bill-by-mail toll. We divide vehicles into classes on a traditional toll facility in North Carolina, such as the Monroe Expressway and the Triangle Expressway. Class 1 is a vehicle with two axles, that's the basic rate. Any class 2 vehicle with three axles is charged twice the two-axle rate, that's twice for the transponder rate or twice for the bill-by-mail rate, and that includes vehicles with three axles themselves or a two-axle vehicle towing trailer with one axle on it. Any vehicle with four or more axles is charged four times the class 1 vehicle rate. That's four times the transponder rate or four times the bill-by-mail rate as applicable. On the Monroe Expressway, our signage, sorry to do this to you, Jean, but ours shows you both rates. On I-77, it'll tell you bill-by-mail's higher. Ours, because they're fixed, it's easier for us to show both rates, so we'll show the transponder rate and the bill-by-mail rate to the next exit and to the end of the Monroe Expressway. It's going to be signed as Bypass 74, but we call it the Monroe Expressway at the authority, with the reminder about the three-axle and four-axle multipliers. We also have a chart available of toll rates from end-to-end. It's on our website at ncquickpass.com. To give you an example of reading this chart, this is, again, a class 1 vehicle, two axles. This is the transponder rate. When our team was at the opening of Wingate University off Austin-Cheney Road, we had a lot of interest from faculty and staff in knowing, so how much is it going to cost me to use this to get to work? And we started at Exit 25 at the western end, go all the way to Exit 270, Austin-Cheney, told them $2.12 each way if they have a transponder. And so they worked with that as they would. To turn to I-77 and the special rules that we have for the express lanes, there are a number of ways to travel for free there. There is no free travel in Monroe, remember that. On the Monroe Expressway, everybody on there pays, with one exception I'll get to. But there's free travel options in the I-77 Express lanes. Registered motorcycles, we have a special motorcycle transponder for headlamps that allow travel in the lanes for free. I've talked about high-occupancy vehicles with the switchable transponder. This is the basic steps for travel in a high-occupancy vehicle on the I-77 Express lanes. Have a transponder that lets you identify yourself as a vehicle that can be in there, determine three or more occupants in the vehicle, set your status, and of course, be a two-axle vehicle in this case. Only get two-axle vehicles on the express lanes. Next, transit vehicles will be given a transponder that allow them to travel toll-free. We are working on our program of getting all those distributed. And finally, I'll note that per state law, all first responders equipped with our special first responder transponder, the police, fire, ambulance, travel on any toll facility for free, whether it's express lanes or expressway. First responders need to get to where they need to go, and so we don't charge tolls for them in accordance with state law. There are two options to talk about tonight about setting that HOV status. I've talked about the NC QuickPass EZ Pass Flex. Before the I-77 Express lanes open, we will also unveil a mobile app and website that will allow our transponder customers with a standard or EZ Pass transponder, like I waved up before, to declare HOV status prior to getting onto 77, at least 15 minutes before travel. If you know you'll have three folks in your vehicle and you've got, just say, the standard sticker transponder, you'll be able to register that transponder on our mobile app and then declare that, say, for example, on Wednesday, October 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., this transponder will be in an HOV 3+ vehicle. And the technology will then read the transponder, match it with the information that you entered in the mobile app or on the special website, and register the vehicle as HOV 3+ for that trip. This is a way to allow for that, for the usage of that HOV 3+ toll-free travel without having to purchase the more expensive switchable transponder. You lose some of the flexibility, but you don't have to pay the $16.49 plus tax if that's not something you're interested in. Coming to the home stretch on the presentation, I mentioned our customer service. Toll-free number is available during standard business hours Monday through Friday and also 9:00 to 2:00 on Saturdays. Of course, the website's available 24/7. You can open an account there, manage your account there, pay a bill by mail from the website. But if you do prefer that personal touch, we now have three customer service centers open in Charlotte at the interchange of Harris Boulevard and 45, in Monroe at 3034 Winston Avenue, which is the Navant Health Plaza across from Target, and our original facility in Ardell County, I have to be very careful how I pronounce this, in Morrisville in Wake County. By law, we build these facilities, well, we have these facilities and staff them near a toll facility, but they are not facility-specific. In fact, we've had people, before we opened the Charlotte one, show up with their Triangle Expressway bill and say, can I pay this? And we had to say not, well, Jean had to say, not yet, wait till we open. But now we can have people come who have traveled in Wake County, get the bill by mail, they can now pay it in Charlotte or Monroe at those customer service centers. Again, standard business hours Monday through Friday, plus Saturdays 9:00 to 2:00. In closing, I want to give you a sense of what the Turnpike Authority's QuickPass business is like already, before we even opened in this region, what we've built with about seven years of operation of the Triangle Expressway as of our last quarterly report in September of 2018. We have established more than 190,000 transponder accounts. We have issued more than 420,000 transponders, and in the third quarter of 2018, we were processing approximately 4.5 million transactions per month, defining a transaction as any time a vehicle travels under a gantry. It's a pretty sizable operation, maybe not relative to some other tolling agencies, but relative to our history, it certainly is. We keep growing with the Triangle Expressway, and we look forward to the additional growth in our public service with Monroe Expressway and I-77 Express lanes opening. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm done, and we stand ready for any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Warren and Jane. Any questions or comments from any board members? Thank you. I hope everyone in TV land was able to pick up on that, but we encourage you to go to the website, and we'll certainly count on the fourth estate that's present to be able to share some of this information with the general public. The toll lanes will come online by the end of the year. That's what they're shooting for, and so...
And Monroe Expressway in late fall as well, sometime between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
The process for signing up for the transponders is fairly easy, but you do have to know exactly what addition your vehicle is, you know, an XL or an EX or XLS, because it requests, you choose between multiple options for vehicles. Any further questions? Well, thank you very much, Warren and Jane. Appreciate you.
Couldn't make hitchhiking come back popular again.
Well, for HOV 3.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, at this time, we'll resume with our agenda, and there are no announcement of any vacancies occurring... any vacancies occurring on boards or commissions this evening, and there are no appointments. Is there any unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of things. Just want to announce Superintendent IAS sent us an email just announcing that the annual audit for our idle Statesville schools was the 12th year with no negative findings. We were able, we also have a groundbreaking Thursday of this week at 10 o'clock at Woodland Heights Middle and 1:00 p.m. at Third Creek Middle. We're all invited to. And I wanted to, again, congratulate Mitchell College on the groundbreaking for their health sciences building we attended today, and just tell the public, again, thank you on their behalf for investing in that project, and City of States will along with us and other partners that made that cleanup possible in that area. The citizens in that area really appreciate it. And lastly, I just wanted to, again, thank Ms. Retha for her service to the county and wish her retirement that is blessed with health and happiness. We appreciate you.
And Ms. Jones, I believe we got some word concerning the Health Department?
Yes, we did. We had, if you remember, we presented back to the board at our last meeting on October the 2nd, a joint grant between our Health Department and our EMS, and we received notification yesterday that they have received that grant in the amount of about $85,000, so we're very excited about that. And our Health Department has received a 100 on their reaccreditation. We found that out today. So we're going to have them come and do a presentation to the board, probably at our November meeting.
Two and a half, a little bit of time. Two great pieces of news from our Health Department and our EMS service. Thank you, Commissioner Hough. This evening is a public comment period. I have not received anyone that wants to be heard, and I would inquire if anyone left sitting, if they would like to be heard. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. New business, I believe there is any. County managers' report?
I'll make this as brief as possible, because I know we're running late, but just a couple reminders. One, our organizational meeting for the Board of County Commissioners is scheduled for Monday, December the 3rd, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Just want to make sure that's on your calendars. And two, we only have one regularly-scheduled commissioner meeting for the month of November, and that is November the 20th, but we will have our Fall Retreat, which is scheduled for November the 16th. Also, to let the board know that the ATM that is currently located in our Registered Deeds parking lot will be relocated. It will be removed on October the 31st from that Registered Deeds parking lot. They're off Constitution, and it will be put into a new location at our Board of Elections office, and that'll probably go into place January or February. So that's the State Employees Credit Union ATM that is there currently. And I already let the board know about the grant received, so that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. We did have three matters that we heard in a closed session after our pre-agenda meeting, one dealing with attorney-client matters pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A4. There was nothing, no actionable items for that matter. Likewise, we discussed an issue concerning property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A5. No action to be taken on that. And we did discuss, among other things, two matters relative to economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A4, for which we have two motions. One relates to an economic incentive for Project Sheet, the other, an economic incentive for Project Donut. So is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I want to make sure I have the project name right. Storehouse?
Sheet, isn't it?
Storehouse.
Storehouse, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on November 20th, 2018, 7:00 p.m., regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $333,500 over a five-year period for Project Storehouse, based on a $17 million investment in Ardell County.
A motion by Commissioner Hough. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion concerning Project Donut?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on November the 20th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m., regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $131,600 over a five-year period for Project Donut, based on a $6.8 million investment in Ardell County.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there anything more to come before the board? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.